You know what I mean? It's like somebody that gives off on you, they're ten dollars. That's like a pervert here.
How are they great? Oh, she did.
I'll call the August eighteenth, seventh, fifth, regular meeting for police state and northern sports.
United States of America, in two republics which stands one nation, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Also, Keefer.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sheriff. Foote.
Here.
Alsop.
Here.
Before you are the minutes from the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty regular meeting. Do you think they have any questions, Ron? I need a motion to accept them.
No.
Pardon? I oppose communications and petitions.
Yes, we've got two letters here. The first one is dated August five. It's from the Tax Litency Review Council, which is that county agency, Besire City Council. The Crawford County Tax Litency Review Council recently met to review the tax agreement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the annual report filed March thirty-one, twenty-nineteen, by the enterprise's own manager and is for the period ending December thirty-one, twenty-eighteen. In close, you will find the recommendations made by the Tax Litency Review Council as required by the Ohio Vice Code, section fifty-seven oh nine point eight-five. A legislative authority that receives from a Tax Litency Review Council written recommendations shall within sixty days after receipt hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the review data. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the enterprise's own manager for your jurisdiction or me. Sincerely, June Wolf, Chairman, Tax Litency Review Council. And you'll see the one recommendation attached, and that is traditionally referred to the economic development.
Any questions for that economic development?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And we have a second communication here dated seventeen of August, the last of this year, addressed to Besire City Council from Vicki DeShawn, eleven oh eight Hill Press Drive in Besire. It's regarding ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-twenty, amending and supplementing codified ordinance chapters one eleven and one thirteen. Because I will be out of town and unable to attend the August eighteen, twenty-twenty council meeting, I hereby submit this letter to be read at the meeting. The purpose of this letter is to clarify when ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-twenty amending codified ordinances, chapters one eleven and one thirteen should become effective. In the audio recording of the July nine, twenty-twenty special ad hoc committee council rules of procedure meeting, Clerk Hill asked Chairman Myers if he would be requesting the legislation as a regular or emergency. Committee member Keefer stated, no emergency. Committee Chairman Myers stated, we've waited seven months, we can wait another six weeks. I am going to assume that Myers' reference to six weeks was based on his assumption that the ordinance caption would be read at three separate council meetings, i.e. July twenty-first, August fourth, and August eighteenth, and passed by council at the August eighteenth meeting. However, since the ordinance was requested by the committee to be regular and not emergency, it would not become effective until thirty days after its passage by council or ten weeks after its first reading. Further, since the August fourth council meeting was canceled, and assuming there are no other council meeting cancellations, ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-twenty should have its second reading on August eighteenth and its third reading on September first, and if passed by council on September first, should become effective October one, twenty-twenty, or twelve weeks after its first reading. Finally, since council is not following some of the rules and procedures set forth in current chapters one eleven and one thirteen, but is following some of the rules and procedures set forth in the proposed ordinance, which has yet to be passed by council and become effective by law, I am concerned that council is violating some of its current rules and procedures. Vicki L. DeShawn, eleven oh eight Hill Press Drive, and that is to accept and file.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to read into the record two points of clarification, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
First of all, she is correct in that it was my assumption in the referencing that it would be the three separate council meetings. That was not my statement was to say you can wait another six weeks to pass it. And her statement to thirty more days, I never made any reference to one of the other factors when I had that point of clarification.
Okay.
And I'll move to accept and file.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Agreeing permission for visitors to speak? Does anybody want to address council? Please go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kent Schrems. I'm not a resident, but I know Superior Ambulance, we address council about your guys' upcoming contract you have for ambulance service in San.
Okay, if you want, you can take the mask off, because I'm having a hard time here.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
Could you start over?
Yes, my name is Kent Schrems, Matt Cunningham. We work with Superior Ambulance Service. We're actually new to Ohio. We acquire a handful of ambulance companies in the Ohio area here. And we saw that you guys have a contract coming up. You've been here in Besire for nine one ones, and we'd like to give you a quick little who we are and let you know where to tell.
Yeah, you can tell us.
Okay, actually, I have a presentation if you'd like. If you want to see otherwise, I have a handout.
Um, the presentation, we'll just run through it. We just have the handouts.
Sure.
So I'm Matt Cunningham, business development. I've been at Superior for twenty-seven years. Superior started nineteen twenty-nine, dating when I was ambulances, ambulance, that were doing nine one one. Before there was nine one one, so the police started calling, they had two phones, they ran out of their house. Name Superior actually comes from the conversion company for the Cadillac, whose name is Superior. And they didn't have enough money to change the paint job, so Superior Ambulance was born. That's how it happened. In the early eighties, their son, they built a block company from that. At the time, they had five ambulances. When I started, we had twenty-five ambulances, which are what we do now, and we had almost four hundred ambulances worth now in four states. Twenty-five, five states, twenty-five hundred employees and three helicopters. We run out of Illinois. We've been doing nine one for a long time. We did originally solely for accounting when we started them. Then fire departments decided they could do it better and cheaper, and with their own fault and employees. So we pivoted more to hospital to hospital transports. If you go to a hospital, you hire a level here, we bring it to the next hospital, well, hospital discharges. Then things started to change again, and we started to get back to that. So we do nine one in that in Illinois, we do in Wisconsin, Michigan, and Indiana, and obviously in Illinois, and San Diego as well. In the information book, I put different ways that we do it. It's not just a plug and drag system of, you know, you pay us to come in and do your nine one one. There's multiple ways of doing this. Some of them wouldn't cost you anything. Like in a town in Illinois, it's a small rural town, it's a hospital, we do, we service the hospital, they're discharged, they're helping patients. Then we fill in nine one, but the staff that's already there. So there's no cost, it's community. They don't pay us to do it, we just bill the patients and we bring them. So it saves the town, it's not having to pay. But if we do this in Wisconsin also, it works really well in rural towns that have hospitals. Our kind of book of business, those hospital discharges and trace for the patients are less difficult. So if we're here anyway servicing that.
Yeah.
Sounds like something that would work here.
Yeah.
Very well for you guys if you don't want to hang out with everything. So we would just kind of move in, we'd be here, we'd be in town, service hospital, kind of take care of nine one one. One of the things we tell the hospitals is, if there's a discharge, we will prioritize the nine one one over discharge. Generally, they'll care of that because nine one one, we bring a patient into the minimum. If we add to, if we're busy, we can't, otherwise we're just going to be less than we were.
And through our acquisition, through Community Ambus and Columbus Connection, we're going to have stations in Shelby, Mansfield, Toledo, Centerville, outside Dayton, and then obviously in Columbus and around Columbus.
Are you in Shelby now?
We will be when the acquisition finishes here shortly. They're on nine one and now in Shelby.
You said Community and Columbus Connection is the two in Ohio you require.
Correct. Yep.
Do you have any business cards or anything?
I do. We just wanted to let you guys know that we're in the neighborhood, and the questions were here, and then also I was hoping after the meeting with the ambulance council meeting tomorrow, just to kind of let them know who we are, what we offer, just to get some ideas out there. So we're really, really creative with our solutions. We can customize it to whoever needs it.
Well, Mr. Myers is Health and Safety Chair. He might want to get ahold of you and maybe have a meeting.
Yeah, I've got a multitude of questions, but I won't do it during the meeting here.
Understood. Yeah.
But thanks for coming and introducing yourselves.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with you with my questions, thank you.
Does anybody else have public speaking, want to address council?
Hi, I'm back from Ian Williams at one twenty-two Concord Drive. So we've been going through the process of rezoning, which, as you know, we're on board with. Of course, the association being grandfathered in, et cetera, et cetera. We're still not settled on the issue of the lighting, in my mind. We had asked that, we have the pole lighting, similar to our sister neighborhood, the Reserve. I think maybe at the last meeting I spoke prematurely when I said possibly the landowners might pay for it, when we did a little more research, we went out to Brentwood, which is a newer development out past the cemetery. They do have that type of lighting. So I've just been, I looked online, it's, in my research, the utility, the industrial lighting is more expensive to install and maintain than the pole lighting, so it's cheaper. So I tried to call a few people, my call got redirected, things like that. So I did speak with Mr. Myers, who was kind enough to say he would help me a little further along in the process. So I just want to make sure that I'm going down the right road. Is this, is this something that's going to be taken care of at a different meeting or with a different committee, or? I just want to make sure that this is something I should even be, you know, I just want to feel like we're all in, you know, it's all settled.
Question for you, Mr. Mayor. What would be the process for her to kind of start that conversation?
We just set up a meeting with you.
Okay.
And if I can get your phone number after.
Okay.
And then we'll call you and contact you and get the ball rolling on that.
Okay, great.
I think one of the things, if I may, she mentioned when I spoke there earlier, that when like Brentwood Drive was put in, the city did pay, according to the developer, did pay to put in the similar style lighting. So I didn't know if that was something that we needed to find any minutes, or if you already have knowledge of that, or?
I have no knowledge of that. I can look at, I can look into it.
Drum up anything out of our archives to kind of help clarify that point would be great and help you with your meeting potentially.
Okay. We'll research that before the meeting for you.
Okay, so I just give you my number and then you'll be contacting me?
Yeah, I'll come over there.
Okay, great.
Because you're on Facebook Live, and if you give your number now, the whole city's going to call you.
I wouldn't do that.
So you'll be very popular.
So I think that's it, until next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wants to address council? Hearing none, moving on to standing committee reports. Mr. Foote.
Besire City Joint Regular Committee Meeting for Thursday, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty was called to order at six p.m. by myself. Members present were Mark Keefer, Kevin Myers, James Dean, Lisa Alsop, and myself. Bruce Trucca was absent. Up first, we have Besire City Joint Regular Committee Meeting called to order by me at six p.m. Number two, with public participation. In light of the new state mandate that face masks must be worn in public, I ask council members whether they would prefer to return to conducting public meetings via video conference as was done over the spring when city hall was closed because of the coronavirus pandemic. And all council members present express a preference for any sort of meeting in person. Number three was order of committee business. Up first was economic development, called to order at six oh four p.m. Besire Tourism and Visitor Bureau appointment. Council received a letter from the Besire Tourism and Visitor Bureau requesting a council appoint a councilperson to fill the remainder of Candace Yocum's term on the bureau, following her resignation from council on July ninth. Myers made a motion to appoint councilperson Doug Foote to serve on the bureau for the remainder of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one council term. Alsop seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. The appointment will go to full council for consideration at its next meeting on August fourth, twenty twenty. I recessed the Economic Development Committee at six oh five p.m.
Does anybody have any questions for economic development?
Mr. President, we just have to have a full council vote on that.
Does anybody want to discuss the vote on the appointments of the tourism? Okay, we're just have a vote here, all in favor of appointing Mr. Myers, or Mr. Foote to the tourism, Besire's Tourism and Visitor Bureau. All of theirs say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for economic development? Okay, Mr. Keefer, the plating?
Yes, plating met Thursday, July twenty-third, from six oh six to six twelve p.m. Members present, Bruce Trucca, who's that? Oh, yeah, we came in. Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, James Dean, myself, Chair. Number one, Concord Drive rezoning proposal. On July thirteenth, council had a public hearing on proposed zoning reclassification of underdeveloped properties on Concord Drive from apartment residential to urban neighborhood residential are agreed. No opposition to the proposal was voiced at the hearing. At present, single-family homes like those which a developer wishes to build are not permitted there. The proposed homes would likely exceed the development standards for the R-three district. There are two rezoning proposals on the table, to rezone all the parcels on Concord Drive or just some of them following the rezoning. If approved, a subdivision revision would be necessary as the parcels in question are within a planned unit development for condominiums. Residents there are contractually obligated to keep their residence in a similar color and subtile. There are also infrastructure issues in the area as the second and third phases of the subdivision were never accepted by the city following construction in two thousand and four. Deanna Williams, one twenty-two Concord Drive noted that the Concord Drive Homeowners Association would prefer small street lights than are typically installed on city streets. Law Director Rob Ratliff advised her to contact the administration on the matter. Foote made a motion to request legislation, rezoning all of the parcels on Concord Drive from A-R to R-three, but they seconded by me. Motion passed by voice vote. Vicki to recess, the plating committee at six twelve p.m.
Does anybody have any questions for the plating today? Moving on to finance.
Keep going, finance. Thursday, met Thursday, July twenty-third, six twelve to six thirty p.m. Members in attendance, Bruce Trucca, Kevin Myers, James Dean, and myself, Chair. Number one, manpower ordinance during its meeting on July ninth, committee requested that the law director draw up draft legislation repealing and replacing the existing manpower ordinance to state that the non-union employees listed on, in the ordinance, in ordinances would receive the same percentage wage raises agreed to in the latest absentee contract. Law Director Rob Ratliff provided a draft combining the existing employee and supervisor manpower ordinance, since several supervisor positions have been eliminated with the positions' duties assumed by the Service Safety Director. Other changes to the existing ordinances incorporated in ordinance numbers thirteen dash twenty twenty and thirteen dash and fourteen dash twenty twenty, which failed to pass on June second, twenty twenty, are also included in the draft. Ratliff explained that it's not possible to write the legislation to have the wage raises of non-union employees automatically mirror those of union employees because pay scales would also have to be addressed. In addition, three unions are covered by the manpower ordinance, not just absentee, but the various union contracts renegotiated at different times. Myers made a motion to request draft, the draft ordinance as emergency legislation, but it seconded by me. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, appropriations. Keefer referred various appropriations to the committee. Auditor Joe Schiffer explained that the following appropriation could be made. From the unappropriated general funds, twenty-five thousand dollars to twenty-five capital outlays slash seven one one zero and seven one one one. Police department slash program, I security of persons and property, and metric grant funding for a vehicle purchase or operation code. B, from unappropriated coronavirus relief funds, relief fund, funds, twelve thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to twenty-four material and supplies slash seven seven eight oh, general government slash two six seven coronavirus relief fund in additional CARES Act coronavirus relief funds. C, from unappropriated fire department donations fund, seven hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-five capital outlay slash seven one one five fire department slash two seven six fire department donations in donated funds for the purchase of equipment. Me made a motion to request emergency legislation to amend ordinance sixty-five dash twenty nineteen to make the appropriations, but they seconded by Myers. Motion passed by bold call and vote. Keefer recess, finance at six thirty p.m.
Any questions for finance?
I got a question. I got a couple statements to make. It says I was part of the meeting, first it states that I was absent at this joint meeting, and then it says that I'm present. I was absent because it was an approved absence as I had surgery on July twenty-third, and so then we need to amend the minutes for the finance committee. That's number one. Number two, it states that you guys had reviewed the draft, the manpower ordinance. In here, I noticed from reading the legislation, there's no reference made to the life insurance. Don't understand why the committee didn't address it because it was referred.
Well, it was supposed to be in there for us, for that thought we discussed, and I think you got anything on that.
I can speak to both things. To Mr. Trucca's first point, the plating, finance, and health and safety minutes have to be amended to note his absence. Again, as he mentioned, fully excused absence. The header page is correct, and the latter three committees need to be amended. I suppose we can do that in one motion. As to the life insurance and the manpower, it was not in the draft ordinance, and there was a request made to take that ordinance and go forward as a request of legislation without that in there. It was not discussed in the meeting, as I recall, the minutes, life insurance never came up in the meeting. So we can either, this goes to the law director, but we could vote to amend the ordinance now or send it back to committee to include that. I don't know which would be better.
Yeah, and one of the questions with respect to that life insurance was how much, you know?
I don't remember that.
Because we talked about ten thousand, twenty-five thousand. So, you know, there's still, there's a couple of questions on that. So the manpower ordinance does not include reference to that. You can, as Mr. Hill indicated, you can proceed with the first reading and amend it later, or you can just send it back to committee, and as Mr. Shawn pointed out, bringing it back is perhaps an emergency because that would have been the third reading. The next meeting would have been the third reading anyway. Pass it as an emergency at that reading with the life insurance issues solidified, if you will.
Mr. Myers?
To your question about why we passed it, I would offer you a apology because in my mind, I didn't think that it was part, that the two were in the same thing. I thought it was two different issues we were dealing with. And last I knew, we were waiting on administration to give us dollar figures for that, and they brought that back to us. So it was not done intentionally by anyone. I assumed this were two different things, so I offer you my apology for that.
I would say send it, set on it, because then I got another question. I'll look on this piece of legislation that I was reading, and if I may.
Yeah, you may.
Section fifteen of the ordinance that the Connecticut had reviewed, the draft, says that second fifteen, there shall be a minimum of fifteen minute men appointed by the fire chief at the approval of the Public Safety Director, who shall receive state minimum wage for each of the hours of service in all halls with a minimum payment of two hours. Be eliminated at?
Where are you reading from this?
Page twelve of fourteen, section fifteen of ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty.
Page one, twelve of fourteen, okay.
Twelve of fourteen, section fifteen.
I remember we voted to take that.
We took that out of the manpower, that's for sure, I do remember.
So that's another reason, I think you really need to redo this.
Maybe we should just hold off and not that. Send it back to committee?
I'll move this, send it back to committee. I don't know if this is the proper time here.
It can be delivered over the phone.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Somebody I thought told me that the life insurance, they did check on that cost, and it was really a small amount. I don't remember who told me that. I think you.
Yeah, I, I, the other suggests, I don't remember, I don't figure the cost is minimal. I think we talked about that in our meetings too, but I don't think we ever settled on that.
Maybe they'll have that information on Thursday for us to know how much it'll cost. Anything else, Bruce? Or we got to have a motion to amend the minutes for your? Okay, we'll read it in next committee. Suzie?
Mr. Myers? Health and Safety met July twenty-three from six thirty to six thirty-five. Members present were according to the record, Bruce Trucca, which will fix later, James Dean, Mark Keefer, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item one, traffic control map changes. Council received a letter from the City Traffic Commission recommending two changes to the city traffic control map, to add two stop signs on South Lane Street and East Renslow Street on the southeast and northwest corners, and to add no parking on the north side of River Street from Tiffin Street to West Perry Street. No objections were voiced to the proposed changes. Keefer made a motion to request regular legislation making the change, but they seconded by me. Motion passed by voice vote, and it recessed Public Safety at six thirty-five p.m.
If anybody has any questions for health and safety?
And wrapping up, there was no public participation, and I asked for a motion to adjourn regular committees. Motion was made by Keefer and seconded by me at six thirty-five p.m. That motion carried.
Okay, we need a motion to amend all the minutes?
Except economic development.
Yeah, it would be to amend plating, health and safety, and finance to remove Mr. Trucca's name as president.
I'll make a mention. Still move? Second.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we don't want to have the motion except all these minutes? The force is all, you can amend it, okay. Skip over that. Reports to the officers, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for bringing council meetings back to the chambers. It's always very challenging to meet on Zoom, and so this works a lot better, I believe. We have a new chief of police. Some of you were at the swearing in last week. Neil Ossenhauer is our ninth chief in our history. Neil Ostenheimer is our ninth chief in our history. He's a twenty-year veteran of the PD. I'm sure you all know him. Captain Stevens and Neil were both tested. The tests were very competitive and both would have made fine chiefs. And so Neil came out on top and we pledge our support and certain, certainly our congratulations. Many of you also wear Dr. Wenderday was last Saturday in Desires. There was some very nice articles. Mary Fox did a wonderful job on that for the Telegraph Forum and Crawford County now had a nice story too. Proclamation is online. He's turned a hundred years old and what a great guy, what a great guy. One of, one of our treasures here. We got another treasure, his name is Joe Armbruster. Many of you know him. He was chosen as the Crawford County Outstanding Senior Citizen for twenty twenty by the Advisory Council and the Board of Trustees of the Ohio District Five Area Agency on Aging Incorporated. And that's one thirty this Friday. So if you're not doing anything at one thirty, come to City Hall, be out on the front porch there and give Joe his well-deserved award. They're just two examples of what it takes to make any rural community, especially Desires, a better place. They're just very selfless people, always looking out for other people and a lot of volunteers in this community, including Rotary, Kiwanis and Altrusa. I don't want to leave any of them out, but there's some really good public service clubs. People that water the flowers, a lot of good churches that are involved, you know, you guys know them. They're folks that see things that need to be done and don't look for pay, they just get it done. Crawford Works, they're another grassroots example that started up with an idea. Robin Hildebrand took it and ran with it and she's since turned over. Hordes are one of the major sponsors. We had a nice ribbon cutting last week. They've got a new office right next to First Federal Community Bank. Congressman Jordan was in town last week and met with the new owners of G E. Savant is their name, as we've mentioned before, had a tour of the plant. He also met with Avita. He's always very good about coming to the communities here at least, you know, once every month or two. And is a very good hands-on congressman. We appreciate the concern for the effects of COVID on a community. He, he really was concerned about how it was. Fortunately, we had some good news to report to him at that time and I think we still do. One more thing, we have a new person in our midst tonight. And we have very, two very good media outlets in this town. And we have a new news director for W B C O, W Q E L, Crawford County now. His name is Randy Bigley and this is Randy right here. So welcome to the community. We look forward to working with you. It's a, we've had a really good relationship with the organization for many years as well as with the T F. So we appreciate everything you do in the community and if any of us can help you on your transition, please let us know. That's it for today.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Do you have a smile, Randy, so we get a picture of you?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for your accolade that you gave to both Dr. Winter and to Mr. Armbruster. They're both very good role models for many of us. I wouldn't have had my career in emergency medicine without Dr. Winter, so I do want to thank you for calling them to attention.
Isn't it interesting that one is a Kiwanis member and one's a Rotary member? Yeah, both very good.
And I also want to ask Mr. Bigley if he's gonna work on a sign-off that would mirror James McCarr's famous sign-offs.
Oh, yeah. I could work on that.
Well, James, yeah, we, James did a good job and he moved on to, should mention that, moved on to greener pastures.
Spectrum one.
Spectrum one, yes. Yes, that's good, good.
Somebody else have any questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
On Mr. Keever?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, one, I had a concern from a, several citizens about the alley over here behind Tim Hortons where their drive access from Poplar. Been, one person is a resident who uses that alley daily due to where they live. And they've come many times, coming into close collision there because the people coming in from Poplar do not stop. They, they have the right of way. There is a yield sign there, but I, I brought this up earlier with Mr. Wagner today since I saw him. And I'd like you to make sure it brought up at traffic commission.
Okay, so you brought it up with Mr. Wagner?
So I, my proposal was, like I said to Mr. Wagner, is one of two things or both of them. Put a stop sign on the eastbound coming from Poplar and a speed bump just like on that driveway, not in the alley, on that driveway, just like Good Hope. The parking lot that United Bank owns next to Good Hope, they have a speed bump there. And if you put at least one car length away from that intersection, that would slow them down.
We'll put that, yeah, we'll put that on the agenda for the next.
Right, but we need to suggest that to them because otherwise they're gonna have to remove part of that fence because they say they can't see, the people heading north in the alley can't see the people coming east on that driveway.
Okay, I'll, I'll, we'll bring it up. I got it on the agenda, we're gonna put it on the agenda for the next traffic commission act.
I appreciate that.
One more thing, there's a tree out on Crawford Street that sticks out and I know one camper that hit it years ago and your garbage trucks have learned to go around it.
Go around it on Crawford?
On Crawford Street.
Okay, do you know where it's close to or?
It's the only tree that's in the tree lawn on Crawford Street. So it'd be on the east side of the road.
Because I use, guys are used to pretty good when it's, it's a danger, the trucks trimming the branches, so.
Just at least not the one branch that's hanging out.
I'll make sure we get that in.
Thank you.
Who else?
It's been brought to my attention here that we may be able to accept the minutes as amended for the ones that we changed there for committees. Might, might wanting to ask for a motion for that just so we don't have to read them again all next, next meeting.
Move to you, Chris. I'll second that.
All favor.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Safety Services Director report.
Okay. Jeff's report, we've got a new garbage truck was referred to service and finance on March third, twenty twenty and we want to discuss it on Thursday. Breach at Pine's Reservoir was scheduled to start today. I got a text from them and said they were starting, actually starting today, so. Irving Street was milled a couple of weeks ago and it's supposed to be paved tomorrow. That's on the schedule for tomorrow, so. We have requested testing for captains and lieutenants in both fire and police departments. We're gonna be open at the pool on weekends traditionally like this, after August first, we, it slows down quite a bit. We just do weekends. We've kept it open a little longer than normal, but we're gonna just go through the weekends now for Labor Day. There's, Friendship Bridge is gonna have some maintenance done and it'll work, will begin very soon. Some repair and some sealing. We talked about ninety-day trial to make the intersection of Hopley and Wedstone, a two-way stop after the projects were completed, but due to the many concerned calls and visits to the city hall about that, the traffic light was turned back on. Actually, nobody was in favor of the two-way stop, everybody was turning it back on, so we were, we were listening. Dirt Dog Ed is, is gonna be doing some miscellaneous items, finishing up on projects for a month, maybe more. Just, you all know there's some work that still needs to be done out there. And as far as for Arrowhead Drive and the Friendship Path, contractor by name of Dellinger did a great job on it. They'll be back in the fall when it gets a little bit more conducive to seeding, so look for that to happen. I already had some good comments about both Arrowhead as well as the Friendship Path. We have signage that we're putting up. I met with Kevin for Rotary's gonna be so gracious as to provide a pump station, which are very nice and possibly a bench for another couple.
And some trees.
We were out there, Kevin and I were out there last week, wasn't it?
Yep.
And I know there was several bikers using it just that short time.
I think we passed six of them when we were, ten minutes we were there.
So biking right now is, I mean, it's really taken off. You try to buy a bike right now, it's very difficult, so. COVID has had that effect on a lot of things, so. Anyway, that's it for today, thank you.
Any questions for Safety Service Director report, Mr. Myers?
Mr. Mayor, on your topic of the civil service, you've requested for captains and lieutenants. I'd like to request we also get testing scheduled for patrol officers and firefighters and the reason, and I think this is already an open project. I'd like to discuss it more on Thursday, but the reason that I'm gonna ask of that is there are many departments, and I'm speaking more on the fire department side of this, many departments in our region that have all applied for the SAFER grant. They're all gonna be hiring a plethora of people. If you're not first, you're last and I don't want the leftovers of everybody that didn't test anywhere else and are to get hired. And I think we need to be proactive and get that done as soon as possible.
We're gonna meet with the two chiefs tomorrow, kind of go over budgets, where we sit with everything and then make some, some decisions on, on that.
I think it's imperative to have a list ready though in the event you do decide we're going to hire, I'd like to have that ready.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Safety Service Director report?
Oh, one more. We talked about Hopley Avenue previously, but you said that was gonna be milled back down and redone.
Remilled, remilled, paved, yeah.
Are they gonna do the entire section again?
Don't have a date on it, but we know, everybody knows it's an issue and it's a roller coaster going out there, so. It's not acceptable, so.
It's a coffee spill.
It sure is.
I got a question. We had a crash last week here on Southern with a city being pulled in. Did we incur any cost due to that?
We weren't, we weren't, nothing was damaged on our truck. No one was hurt in the, no one was hurt, so there was no cost there. As far as your A E P coming in and redoing, I don't know, I don't know. Do you know how that works, Rob?
Yeah, there's, obviously there's a damage section of fence there, insurance and claims and things.
What about the pole and the, from A E P we get?
I mean, they'll, they'll be in contact.
I'm assuming we got deductible on our insurance.
Any last questions for Safety Service Director report? Moving on, law director.
Thank you. Well, I'm very pleased to announce that you are now the proud new owners of several derelict properties. Due to tax foreclosures, we now own several properties, the Lucas Street property that everybody's familiar with, Wiki Street property that is kind of out of sight, but is horrific. Property on West Perry that maybe has some rehab potential and probably soon will be the West Stone property. So those I need to refer to public lands and buildings as well as, I don't know, is the tax rate still going? Regardless, we need to talk about the Pine's Reservoir. So all those things, you can go to public lands and buildings.
I'll refer those with pleasure.
Thank you.
I'll second. All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Any questions for?
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Law Director, did you wish to refer eight seventeen Woodlong to committee? You mentioned that to me last week in email.
Oh, yes, I did. That is another property that is perennially problematic, but the owner's kind of gave a proposal. So I would, yes, add eight seventeen Woodlong to that list as well.
Any questions for the law director? Okay, do we have a report from the auditor?
Yes, we do. She is not here this evening, she will be here on Thursday. I'll read her report. These are referrals basically for August eighteen. They are all basically to the finance committee. I would like to refer various appropriations as follows. One appropriation needed for money received from the Marx Grant for Fire Department Equipment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to the Fire Levy Fund. Two appropriations needed in the Parks and Recreation Land Fund in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents for contractual services which was received from the Desires Kiwanis Club for the new pickleball courts and nine thousand dollars to materials and supplies for repairing the Friendship Bridge. Since I do not want to make any additional appropriations to the general fund, I would also like to refer transfers within the general fund as follows. From general government and contractual services, one oh one dash seventy-seven eighty dash eight two three sixty, the amount of eleven thousand thirty dollars to security of persons and property slash police department slash capital outlay, one oh one dash seventy-one ten dash fifty five two five four four. One thousand thirty dollars for the K nine unit and the general government slash civil service slash materials and supplies, one oh one dash seven seven four five dash five two four two six and one oh one dash seven seven two four five dash five two four two seven. Ten thousand dollars for civil service testing needed for police and fire departments. I will be at Thursday's meeting for any questions, any other vegetarian matters, as Joyce Schiffer, auditor. And that will be two referrals, one for appropriations and one for transfers.
The motion referred the appropriations to the finance committee.
So move it, second. All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. And this, this.
Yep.
So. The motion referred second on the finance committee, made motion second.
All favor. All opposed.
While we're on the auditors thing, I was looking through our general revenue and it kind of stuck out to me, it looks like we are up for what we, our target is for general fund significantly. And if that's gonna be the going trend, if we're gonna stay up on that, I would almost want to look into, we have the two percent income tax that's being charged. I don't know how that works, but I think the first one percent of that, we get the two levies that are half and half for safety and street levy. But the one percent, I think we don't have to have a levy or we don't have to ask the voter, but I'm wondering, can we voluntarily like, like council vote to, you know, drop that one percent down to like a point eight five or something? I don't know if that's even possible, but you know, just, just to give, give some of that tax money back to people. Cause I know Delaware's a one point eight five percent income tax levy. Since we're at two, we don't look as attractive as Delaware tax base wise. I, I don't even know if that's possible, it's just something to keep an eye on here, but.
Mr. President, first of all, we're down three percent for the year income tax revenue.
What's this sixty-four percent and our target's fifty-eight percent right there?
That's, every month is divided by twelve. So our tax revenue is higher during, because of April, tax revenue, this, this time was April, July. So your target's up, we'll drop all the way down during the year. Target.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, let's keep an eye on, but if it, if it looks like we're gonna be high.
We're not gonna be high.
At the end of the year, we could.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be about three hundred, two to three hundred thousand below last year.
We'll, we'll keep watching it, we'll keep watching it.
And the, and the other thing I would say, most towns that have a lower median income like us will, are approaching two and a half percent. Delaware is absolutely no comparison to us. You know, it's, it's a much wealthier community. And if you're gonna be going down to one point eight percent, you are gonna be cutting money out of safety forces. That's where it would come from, so. So that's, that in effect is defunding the police, so.
Well, if our revenue's up though, it's not if we're.
Our revenue's down, right here, right there, it's black and white. It's right there.
Here's black and white too, it says.
Look on the, look on the tax revenue, black and white right there, look on that right there.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, let's keep an eye on it and we'll just keep watching it over the next couple of months. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we watch it every month, don't worry. Well, we watch it every month. Don't worry about that.
The auditor's statement of cash position for July 31 is in your packet. That's just been submitted. It'll come up again in two weeks. There are two treasuries reports, because we did not meet on August 4. We have to accept and file the one for June, which you got back in late July, and then the one for July had just been submitted. So we just need to accept and file the June treasuries.
The motion accepted and filed in June.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. No police chief, no fire chief. The motion accept all the city officer's reports.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Visitors input regarding standing, special committees and city officers, anything they want to comment on that? None. Anybody to recess? Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
This is a first time legislation. We have three ordinances. Ordinance number 25, 2020, has been taken off the agenda and referred back to the finance committee for Thursday. Ordinance number 23, 2020, amending and supplementing ordinance number 65, 2019, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2020, by appropriating from unappropriated general fund, a sum of $25,000 to the capital outlay line item within the police department category within the program one, security persons and property subparagraphs. Further appropriating from unappropriated coronavirus relief fund funds, the sum of $12,813.28 to the materials and supplies line item within the general government category within the coronavirus relief fund subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated fire department donations funds, the sum of $750 to the capital outlay line item within the fire department category within the fire department donations subparagraph, and declaring an emergency, that goes back to finance. Ordinance number 24, 2020, amending the traffic control map and file established by ordinance 20778 in sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Busiris, and adding additional signage, all as detail herein. That's referred back to health and safety. Ordinance number 26, 2020, amending and supplementing section 1157.02 entitled official zoning district map under chapter 1157, entitled zoning districts and zoning district map under title nine, entitled zoning districts under part 11, entitled planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Busiris by the redesignation of the properties located at the undeveloped properties located at Incora Drive for parcel numbers 4400, 1222, 8002, and 4400, 1222, 8001, from AR, the apartment residential district, into R3, the urban neighborhood residential district, and that is referred back to the budget.
The motion accept those as a first reading.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Those will be referred back to originating committee. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time.
Hi. Monica, that's 10148222. And that reduces undeveloped land.
I think that lady, they can talk about out there before.
Yes. Is that what you're on?
Um, so that was just the first reading.
Okay.
And we're not going to vote on it tonight unless somebody wants to make an emergency vote. But normally it goes through three readings.
Right.
I think she's checking the wording. What she's saying is.
Yeah, it says, yeah.
She's being specific. She wants to make sure that it's correct.
It says undeveloped land, and it's actually developed, developed land with city utilities.
Well, it, what it says is undeveloped property.
Yeah.
So, so there's no, no presence of public land.
Committee reports on pending legislation, which will be finance first. Finance, okay. Finance is favorable to 23-2020 various appropriations. Health and safety.
Health and safety is favorable to ordinance 24-2020 traffic control map changes.
25 was pulled, so plating.
Plating is favorable to ordinance 26-2020 plating or at Incora Drive, do some.
Need a motion to accept those reports from the committees?
So moved.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
We have one ordinance. This is ordinance number 22, 2020, and ordinance amending and supplementing chapters 111 council, rules of council, and 111 ordinances and resolutions of title three, legislative part one, the code of the codified ordinances of the city of Busiris, Ohio. At the last meeting, that was favored by the ad hoc rule.
So need a motion to accept that, second reading?
So motion, second.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation. Any member of the public may, general public may present their input or comments on legislation for the third time, but everybody's love, unless the media wants to. Okay. Consideration of proposed legislation for the third time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number 19, 2020, amending and supplementing section 1157.02 entitled official zoning district map under chapter 1157, entitled zoning districts and zoning district map under title nine, entitled zoning districts under part 11, entitled planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Busiris by the recent redesignation of the properties located at 1725, 1675, and 1955, Hopley Avenue, for parcel numbers 4413, 800000, 4400, 1379, 6000, 4400, 797,000, 4400, 1379, 9,000, 4400, 1379, 8,000, 4400, 6506, 4,000, 4400, 6506, 5,000, 4400, 6506, 6,000, 4,6504,000, from RE, the residential estate district, into RV, the general business district, and that has been favored by the planning claim.
Motion to accept that as a third reading.
So moved.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Any member of the general public, makers of their comments on legislation that's been read for the third time, please hear. Further consideration of pending legislation. I guess, since that's the reading, we just need a motion. Do I hear a motion to adopt opposed ordinance 1942?
So moved, second.
Is that both? The second or?
Both of those are general, I don't know, right now.
Good enough. McKibum?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Also?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Also?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2320 is really adopted. And 4.20, if we're just going to leave that as a first reading. Manpower's been pulled. Incora Drive, we're just going to leave that as a first, first reading, so unfinished business.
I have a referral.
I do, too.
We need to refer the property that is city owned property that is over by the Friendship Trail. It's about eight to 10 acres of property. We need to refer that to public lands and buildings so we can discuss the transfer to CIC, because due to the housing study that we all appreciate, which I thank all of you for supporting, we have an investor that is willing to put up modern upscale apartments there for us.
Is that between the new bike path and the cemetery?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you need a motion to refer that? Doug made the motion to refer, do you second?
Second.
Is that going?
Public lands and buildings.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed. What do you say you had a resolution?
Well, okay. I don't know which committee it would go to, other than maybe finance. We received, if I'm correct, a large, not contribution, but more of a grant because of the coronavirus pandemic. It was large. It was to cover all the extra expenses. And I happen to know that Ashland took the excess money that they didn't use and built a fund out of it for small businesses that were in the area that incurred extra expenses. They were able to apply for it and capped out like five grand a business. So I wondered if there was extra money from that that we could maybe possibly offer to some of the small businesses here in town to cover masks that they bought, sanitizers, things like that, so that they can apply for it, and that way it doesn't go back. Because if we don't use it, we lose it. Am I correct?
I think that is true.
Okay. Well, I know that Ashland did it.
Those are, those are not, those are not federal government CARES Act money. Those are local money that many cities around the state have. They put some of their city coffers into a fund.
They said they got it from the CARES Act. I heard on radio.
It's, CARES Act is, first of all, CARES Act is managed through the county, and so much money comes to us. It has to be used for certain things, and what you're describing, as far as I know, is not one of those things.
I'll contact them, see, get the.
Yeah, I, I can check on it, too.
Yeah, I, I actually heard it over the radio. They were discussing it with the Ashland mayor. So the Ashland mayor would be the one you get to contact.
Go ahead and contact him, and then.
Okay.
Along that lines, though, to what she's saying, our county, according to our two county commissioners, Mr. Lay and Mr. Weisner, because they have excess funds left over that are unable to be used because there, it's no use for them, they are using that money to provide hotspots to the local county schools. They're actually working with the superintendents to get a number of children that need these hotspots that do not have internet access, and they're going to provide them for them, and it's, in hopes that they're going to be able to cover the cost of them for two years.
Busiris schools, Mr. Crispin chaired with me today, it's 400 hotspots, and I don't know about Winfere and Crawford.
Yeah, that's what the county's doing with their leftover money.
And computers, too, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess we kind of got into miscellaneous business there, but has anybody got any other things?
I do, sir. Mr. Mayor, a couple referrals I'd like to make. Number one, I was approached by some of the employees of the annual service that want to know who would be able to redo the, the broken concrete as a sidewalk being in the building, so I'd like to refer that to public lands.
Can you, can you second?
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would also like to refer discussion of the entry and exit doors of City Hall to public lands and building.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And then, Mr. Mayor, the area you and I walked, do we need to refer that to public lands to discuss what we're going to do there, or is that part of the ongoing project?
That might be a question for the law director.
So putting the, out near the, the street at the edge of the bike path there, this might fall over part of the land that Doug's talking about, but putting the little repair station for bicycles and some, some trees and some benches or something to sit on there. Most of that being donated, but does that need to refer to discuss moving that forward? Is that already part of the bike, bike path project?
I don't, the bike path project didn't include any of that. It was just for paving the bike path.
Right. So do I need to refer it to public lands for discussion?
Yeah, we're going to use city land to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to refer the use of the area in and around the, the bike path for purposes of placing some additional items there. So moved.
To public lands and building?
Second.
Okay, all there?
Aye.
All opposed? And my last question is, I don't remember if it was in an email from Mr. Hill or from Mr. Fanghausen or somewhere, but it was mentioned, I think, that we would discuss the openings that were left by Ms. Yocum's absence. Do we do this simply, Ms. Sherrick, go into those openings, or is it something that gets discussed? I haven't asked her, I haven't talked to Ms. Sherrick. I'd like to talk to her first and see what she, she might not want to be on one of those committees or something. So we'll figure that out, because I think Ms. Yocum was the chair of the public lands and building.
She was.
So.
For any reason, Ms. Sherrick's not interested in following.
Well, let's make sure she starts coming to the meetings first before we put her on.
Well, she is supposed to be here, right?
No, she has, previous.
Uh, Mr. President, I can somewhat speak to that. Yes, Ms. Sherrick had a work engagement that was arranged before she was appointed. So she will be here at the Thursday meeting. I did mention that we need, with, I mentioned to her that we need to discuss committee appointments and whether they exactly mirrored what Ms. Yocum did, or whether they're different. That's a discussion that I think the committee, committee, public council has to have. My question for the law director, though, when Ms. Sherrick is here, and we have that discussion on Thursday, do those committee appointments have to be, do they become effective Thursday, or does that have to go to the full council, and it becomes effective in early September? Because it's a foreign issue with committees and all.
Those appointments are made by the council president and approved by councils, so we wouldn't be able to approve them until the next meeting.
Are we able to call if, I think, are we able to call and just have a special committee at the end of the joint committees, or?
Before.
Well, before, though, we have to have the conversation, or we, I don't know when, but could we have a special meeting that will allow her to get to work on the things that she wants to be involved in?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you needed to get reported on something, we've got three people, most of whom.
Either or, I just.
Yeah.
I like your idea that, Mr. President, reach out to her and see where her personal lands.
Um, we had, did we refer the thing you talked about?
Yeah, the pines. Yeah, it was already in the projects. I just included it in the list of things we need to do.
Okay. Anybody else have any miscellaneous?
I got one question. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the CARES Act.
Yes.
You know more, probably more about it than anybody, but can we donate any funds that we don't use to, like, the schools, something they, they might fall short on?
The schools will have their own CARES Act money. So theirs, they're funded.
But I am concerned, will they have enough?
Well, they had enough to do the hotspots, and I guess they're, they're buying, I think, 1,000 computers, was it, Kevin, today?
Uh, it was 400 and another 600, so you have 1,000.
Yeah, so the, the money that, the county is obviously, is the ones that manage the money. If townships and other cities don't use it, turn it back in, then we can, you know, make a play for that money. Said, yes, we have a need for that. Whether we can do it from our hands to theirs, I'm not 100% sure.
I just didn't.
I'll find out. Well, we're not going to waste a penny of that money.
That's the reason I ran for council, is to try to help the kids out and stuff, so.
Right, and, and, yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. So I'll make sure, we're going to work very closely with, with the county commissioners, with Joyce, who's obviously in joint jungle. So we'll make sure the money does not get sent back to Washington, DC.
Awesome. There's music at the mural at Shine's Art Park on Thursday, 7:30. August 25, there's a board zoning field meeting in here at 4:00 PM. Need a motion to excuse Ms. Sherrick?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President? Well, they had enough to do the hotspots, and I guess they're, they're buying, I think, a thousand computers, was it Kevin, today?
Uh, it was four hundred and another six hundred, so you have a thousand.
A thousand, yeah, so, um, the, the money that, the county is obviously, is the ones that manage the money. If townships and other cities don't use it, it's turned back in, then we can, you know, make a play for that money. Said, yes, we have a need for that. Whether we can do it from our hands to theirs, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I just didn't.
I'll find out. Well, we're not going to waste a penny of that money.
That's the reason I ran for council, is to try to help the kids out and stuff, so.
Right, and, yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, so I'll make sure, we're going to work very closely with the, with the county commissioners, with Joyce, who's obviously in joint jungle. So we'll make sure the money does not get sent back to Washington DC.
Awesome.
There's music at the mural at Shines Art Park on Thursday, seven thirty. August twenty-fifth, there's a board zoning field meeting in here at four PM. Need a motion to excuse Ms. Sherrick?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
I think the law director wants to say something about the movie Friday night.
Well, there is a movie Friday night, yeah. Sponsored by Horn Family Farms. Movie is The Sandlot. And, um, there's been a bit of a request to maybe consider extending the movie season, season into September, October, November, simply because there, there's not a whole lot else to do. Um, and.
Football music, a lot of kids playing.
Well, yes, and we don't like to compete with fall sports.
But there's only six.
But now we can.
Yeah, and fall sports are somewhat questionable, so we're going to look, we're going to look at that. If we do it, maybe do one movie a month, obviously there's some seasonal things. We have to put a Mario Pfeiffer movie in there or something.
That way, that way it says fall football team movie.
Yeah, or, or, you know, Rudy. So we'll take a look at that. Obviously, we have to draw up the community and see if we have enough support for additional sponsorship. The sponsorships are not cheap. Licensing fees are somewhat expensive, depending on the type of movies you get. So, yeah, we're going, we're going to wait that, and we're kind of taking a wait and see approach to what the governor was doing as far as shutting down sports and things like that, but, you know, there's not a lot of options to date night this, this, this fall, so.
No one wants to games.
Yeah, we're, we're probably looking at maybe having three different, three more nights, but. So if you're interested in sponsoring, we're being a vendor and, and popco, because we need that. Uh, or something along those lines, uh, our Facebook, the Shines Art Park Facebook page, we need to have something to say.
Can we replay the Ohio State Buckeyes' last national championship game that they won?
I think it ranks for them.
Yeah, we can.
It's a little costly.
Sponsored by Watson Church.
But we can, we could probably get one of the citizens to act it out, maybe, I think.
Joy, please, or maybe Thursday, or, or something.
Yes, we've got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight new referrals. We have various derelict properties from the law director to public lands and buildings. We have the TIRFC, the Tax and Senate Review Council of Recommendations from Council to Economic Development. We have the City Hall doors from Council to public lands and buildings. We have the appropriations from auditor to finance. We have the transfers from the auditor to finance. These really are related, the Friendship Trail property and the Friendship Trail land use from Council, public lands and buildings. The ambulance building from Council to public lands and buildings. Those are all new referrals. Already in committee and on the agenda for Thursday are the landlord tenant water rates issued. We've talked about that before, that's in service. We have the garbage truck, that was, sort of safety director wants to bring that up again. That was tabled back in early July. That is in service in finance. We have the civil service test, that's an open project in finance. We have the manpower ordinance, which we talked about this evening, that's in finance. And we have the plans reservoir, that's in public lands and buildings. Also, we probably should have a special ad hoc committee, rules committee, meeting. We just have one less item on that, one last item on that agenda. It would be a special meeting, so that's all we could talk about, unless you want to talk about anything else. That would be amending the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, just FYI, that's fourteen items. We don't have to discuss this now, but if there are any, just in the interest of giving all these items, they're, they're just time, rather than shortchanging anything. If you want to delay any of these items for the next, for a future meeting, or whether you want to just have them all on Thursday, just let me know by Monday, and, and tomorrow. And that's all I got.
Need most to.
So moved.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight fourteen.